Mayor McClellan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Whitehead.
Here.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Radner.
Here.
Councilmember Crawford.
Here.
You have a call.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. These are routine items presented without discussion, but only member can have one considered separately. A regular city council meeting minutes for April 7th, 2025. Special council meeting minutes for the city. C. Appointment of representatives and alternate soccer board. Okay. That's the second. D. Public safety activity summary report for March 2025. E. Approval of pay application number four final for the 2024 sewer lining project M-763 in the amount of $5,000. F. Payment requested from Newland Smith Architecture for architectural services on the event hub and municipal services move with a total amount of $36,677. G. Request to approve payment application number two for the 2024 camera replacement project to Interstate Security Incorporated of Shelby Town Technology. In the amount of $61,185.
And finally, H. New and renewal licenses, April 21st, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Any elected officials here to speak? We, that brings us down to item seven on the agenda. Special recognition presentations. Can we skip this if we don't want them to go?
Sure.
Sounds good to me.
Yes, City Manager Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I turn it over to Deputy City Manager DeCosta to speak a little bit about Scott Lamar, I do want to read his certificate of recog, special recognition. I will also be, I will not read this twice because we also have Thomas Oaks here and another person that we don't want to leave either, by the way, so maybe I won't read it. The Mayor, Council, and Administration of the City of Oak Park, Michigan in testament and tribute to his distinguished public service and lasting contributions to the City of Oak Park and its residents, wish to express their sincere appreciation to Scott Lamar and Thomas Oaks. You have served as a pillar of integrity in this organization and have helped to set the city's high standard of excellence. You have served as a source of guidance, support, and leadership for your colleagues, and it is those qualities that will leave a lasting imprint on the City of Oak Park. Your dedicated spirit, wealth of knowledge, and overall dedication to the City of Oak Park will be sorely missed. Scott, we are going to miss you so much, I cannot believe that it's already time for him to retire. What an asset he has been for our community. And Dave, please feel free to share your remarks.
Thank you. Well, first off, good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Tungate. Scott unfortunately could not be here tonight, but I do want to thank the public safety for coming out and supporting him. Okay, sorry. No, like City Manager Tungate said, Scott has been around for 25 years. Starting, he started with DPW in May of 2000. He was instantly identified as a top performer within our department, working his way through every public works division. Scott was promoted to public service worker two and then to general foreman. At DPW, we often detail the general foreman position as one of the hardest jobs in the city. You're on call 24/7 as a general foreman, and you're first to respond to many public works activities such as water main breaks, fallen trees, snow events, and other issues. His time on call pulled him away from his family and many of the things he liked to do most, like hunting and going up north with his family. Scott would leave public crews as general foreman for 10-plus years until he was promoted to deputy director of public works. As deputy director, he was tasked with many important functions such as our facilities, our water and sewer department mandates, which there are a lot from the state, as well as lead our lead and copper division and our special projects. Scott knows every aspect of the public works department and has dedicated his career to making Oak Park a better place. Scott is going to be severely missed within our department. He's helped me in so many ways throughout my community, and I thank him for that. He's always been a familiar and friendly face to the residents of Oak Park. Many have known him for years, as he traverses all the streets, gets stopped in the streets, people saying hi to him, so he will be severely missed. He does care about Oak Park. He's made this place a career. He does not want to leave. He has been here for 25 years and is kind of looking to start something new. So, on behalf of all public works and I think the entire city, we do wish Scott the best in his next adventure.
Thank you, Dave. Scott is not here tonight, so I am, I'm going to go ahead and ask Director Steve Cooper to join us at the podium to speak about Tom Oaks. Another incredible asset and employee here for the city. And by the way, as we were mentioning, I don't, it doesn't look like he's aged a minute since he came here. The hairline, okay.
I told him the same thing, boss.
Yep.
Take it away. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, City Council, City Manager, Attorney Kraus, and Deputy City Clerk, Bill Ann Williams. It's been both an honor and a privilege to work alongside Officer Tom Oaks for the past 25 years. Throughout his distinguished career, Officer Oaks has exemplified professionalism, leadership, and unwavering dedication to public service. He is a highly decorated officer, having received numerous awards and commendations that reflect the depth of his commitment and the excellence of his work. Officer Oaks has served as a field training officer, playing a vital role in mentoring, guiding, and shaping the next generation of public safety officers. His influence has extended well beyond the training program. Officer Oaks was promoted to the rank fire inspector, and for the past 15 years, he has served in this role with distinction, honor, and integrity. He is certified in fire cause and origin, arson investigation, and other critical areas. He has testified as an expert witness in Oak Park's both the 45th District Court and the Sixth Circuit Court in Pontiac, further establishing his reputation as a trusted authority in the field. Within our department, Officer Oaks is regarded as a resident expert. He's authored many multiple fire standard operating guideline procedures, shaping the policies and procedures which we rely upon today. I personally consulted with him often, and I can say without hesitation, that his insight and expertise has been invaluable to the success of our fire operations. To say that I depend on him heavily would be an understatement. Officer Oaks' unwavering loyalty, steadfast dedication, his continued service to both the city and the profession are truly exceptional. The standards he has set and the legacy he leaves behind will continue to influence his department long after his departure. It's been a true privilege to serve alongside Tom for these past 25 years. And Tom, as you embark on the next chapter of your life, I extend my deepest gratitude and best wishes. I love you. May God continue to bless you and keep you.
Do you mind coming up and having a few words? So I didn't prepare a speech or anything like that. My initial thought was just to say thank you. You know, the City of Oak Park's been very good to me. You know, from 25 years ago, when, I never even heard of the town, I'll be honest with you. I live in northern Oakland County. Kevin Edmonds called me and said, hey, you want to come down for an interview? And, you know, before the internet, he had to give me directions, you know, take 75 to 686, get off at this exit. And then here I am 25 years later. So, I definitely appreciate the City of Oak Park. It's been, it's been very good to me and my family, so. Director Cooper, definitely, he's been influential in my, my career, you know. When I first got in this position of fire inspector, I was, didn't want it when I wanted it or when I got it because I wanted to ride out the rest of my career in this position, and well, 15 years later, here I am, so. But I do want, you know, I do want to say something about these guys right here, and this is not necessarily directed to the city. The city, when you dial 911, you should get police or fire showing up. But I do, I do want to make a point to say, and what I've learned in my last, you know, in my 25 years here, is the amount of responsibility that, you know, and I'm talking to the city council here, the amount of responsibility that you guys put on these guys right here is a huge burden. These guys do two careers. Most other cities, especially with our, our size and run volume, have separate police departments and fire departments. We've combined it. Yes, there are other public safety departments around this area that do public safety cities, but they're a lot smaller, geographically, population-wise, and run volume. You guys put a huge burden on these guys, and I just wanted to point that out. I don't know if it's said or not, the director maybe has said it behind closed doors, and I don't know that. But I just want you guys to know that, you know, they have to know everything, and they have to be perfect at everything at every time. Both police and fire, you know. There's no, hey, yeah, that just, you know, didn't work out perfectly. We have to be perfect all the time, so. I appreciate it, and, you know, unfortunately, a lot of you guys, well, there's a couple of old guys there, but a lot of you guys are the new guys. So, you know, good luck, you know, and, you know, stay on top of things, so. Really, that's all I got to say, but no, I, and probably me banging on this echoing through the microphone, I guess it do. Because I am a little nervous, so. But no, I just want to say thank you, so.
And we want to say thank you back. For all of your service and all the wonderful things we hear about you. All the complaints come to me, and I just get raves about you and our police officers. You are appreciated. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
What?
As far as the old part, old parts.
I don't know what you're talking about. It's right here in the middle.
He has to be in the middle, not you.
No, I hope so.
Why?
All right, here we go. All right, here we go.
That was lovely. Very exciting accounting reports. We need approval for payment of invoices submitted by Garin Luca Miller, PC, for legal services in the amount of $14,621.33.
So moved, and I think we should make it more.
Second.
All right. Discussion.
You're only seconding the so moved, not that you think you can make it.
Amen.
The record's clear.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radner.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Whitehead.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. City Manager Eric Tungate has one item to discuss with us.
Well, councilmembers, good evening. Hold tight because it's a long city manager report tonight. I do have 981, and I'd like to ask our Director of Municipal Services, Kimberly Maroney, to join me at the podium, please.
Thank you, City Manager Tungate, the amazing mayor, and our pro team city council members. We recently went out for bid for the 11-mile parking lot project, and those bids came back last week. We received one bid, and it was $2 million over what we estimated for the project. So, over the past week, we have been working on looking at ways to reduce the scope of the project where we can still do something to respect the goal of creating more of a social gathering space as well as replacing the lot, but making it more cost-effective. So we are going to be rebidding that project out. Hopefully by Wednesday, it will hit the streets again, and we'll be coming back to you hopefully with a lower price in May. So we are asking you tonight to give us the approval to go ahead and reject the bid that we did receive and rebid this project out.
Okay, motion to reject the bid and re-advertise for the 11-mile parking lot project.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? What are we cutting?
So, some of the things that we're looking at right now is removing the green infrastructure that we were going to put the rain gardens down the center. Although we did get grant funding of $100,000 to do that portion of the project. It costs approximately $450,000 to put that in, so it would just be the cement in those areas. One other item is we had planned to do additional sidewalks on Kingston. We're going to eliminate those and do that as a later project. Another portion that we're planning to reduce the scope on is the pedestrian pathway. We're going to do that in colored concrete because the cost of that is so high. Instead, we're just going to strip it and then maybe come back at a later date and do something more colorful and playful.
The pedestrian walkway.
The rest are smaller, and also the last one is the EV charging stations. We're going to remove those.
Something like that?
Okay.
Can you not hear me?
Madam Mayor.
Questions? Councilmember Edgar.
See if I can, yes, talk louder. So, why do you think we only got one bid? And we had 122 contractors look at it? Is it because we weren't offering enough money? Is that?
No, because technically, I think what the main thing is, is there were a few items in there that were not clear enough for the contractors to bid on without putting too much effort in researching it. They were lump sum items. For instance, like the EV charging stations were lump sum. The fire pits were lump sum, where that would require a bidder to do a lot of extensive research on their end. So, we have clarified those lump sum items in this new bid that will go out.
And how much of the lot is going to be repaved?
So, the two, we're only doing two of the three lots, and those are the ones that are really used with the breweries and the restaurants. So it's just the two lots and 100% will be repaved.
So, this is going to be behind schedule?
We still have the same goal to get this done in the summertime, per the businesses' request, so that is still our goal.
Any further questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Whitehead.
This is to reject it, correct? We need to say yes?
Reject the bid and re-advertise for bids.
So we say yes to reject?
Yes, to reject and re-advertise, yep.
Councilmember Radner.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed unanimously. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I do have to go back to 8A. I do believe the amount is incorrect in the agenda item. As I, as I looked at the, the tally, the number it should be is $14,672.97, not $14,621.33, so I just want to make that.
Correction.
I don't know if we need to make that correction in the.
Do we need to vote again? Or no?
Because you're approving the invoices, okay. I just want to make that distinction in the agenda, it was not correct, but, okay. That, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, that completes the city manager report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are now called to the audience. Mayor Pro Tim Sean Whitehead, would you read the directions?
Call to the audience. Each speaker's remarks are a matter of public record. The speaker alone is responsible for his or her comments, and the City of Oak Park does not, by permitting such remarks, support, endorse, or accept the content thereof as being true or accurate. Any person while being heard at a council meeting may be called to order by the chair or any council member for failure to be germane to the business of the city, vulgarity, or personal attacks on persons or institutions. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker.
Thank you. And then do we have, we have some cards.
We do. Sandy Cleggman, can you come to the phone?
Sure. Mayor, the council, I'm sorry, Sandy Cleggman, 862, I drive Oak Park. I only have two questions. One, what's going on with 10 Mile Road, just in the west? And there's a building on Coles, which is just north of Lincoln, on the west side of the street, and it's filled with brown paper. It looks horrible, and I understand that's not code for some reason, I understand what's going on with the road, and all that. 10 Mile Road is supposed to be done on the west side. It's supposed to be done by the end of April, I believe, and we're getting close, but it's a mess.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks, too. Can anybody help me, I guess? I have to move it down, there we go. Yeah, 10 Mile Road is supposed to be done by the end of, at the end of April. It was actually supposed to be beginning in March, and then we were told after a thousand phone calls that it's going to be done at the end of April. And what about the eastbound side? What's going on with 10 Mile Road there? It's been a real pain in the butt for all the residents, and I, I was just able, through a thousand phone calls, able to get some signs moved. It's been, it's been a real problem. I just got that done myself with a thousand phone calls, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Talk to Dave DeCosta, and we will try and make that clear to the rest of the residents. Thank you.
Sylvia Krabitz. Yeah, you can turn the mic back on. You can turn the mic back on from, press the button, sorry.
Is it not, okay. I live on Rosewood, and ever since the two Ferndale schools were built, the trucks have been going up and down and up and down the street, and it's, it's all torn up. I've called several times to engineers here in the city. When are these streets going to be fixed? When is Rosewood going to be fixed? Potholes are everywhere, it's like going on a roller coaster. And while I'm complaining, there are two neon signs on these schools. I don't believe these neon signs belong in a neighborhood. They, they just don't. They're houses. These are not in the middle of, where buildings are. So, what can the city do about getting Ferndale or Oak Park to pay for the streets to be fixed? And this, I've lived on Rosewood since 1966. It has never, ever been fixed.
Please speak to Dave DeCosta about the timing on the street fixing, and just, they have a list of all the streets that need fixing. The worst goes first, I think, is how they do it, and there is a list, and a lot of us are waiting in line impatiently. Please speak to Dave DeCosta.
Thank you.
Kenya Spratt.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenya Spratt. I live at 14531 Pearson Street. Last year, we had a major wind event. I have about a 40, 50-foot tall tree across the street from me, and during that wind event, the root of the tree was compromised, and it's had a really nice pitch at that time. Last week, the neighbor had their sewer system. is again being used as a parking lot for semi-trucks. There's one that's been there for at least four or five days, and it's, you know, right there at the light area, you know, when you drive down. So why it's sitting there and nobody's doing anything about, I don't know, but I just wanted to make certain that somebody addressed that. Thank you.
Thank you. On the back of his shirt says Oak Park cleans up. Anyone else? That's it? First, just a belated Easter wishes, Easter blessings for those who celebrate. Passover and Easter came very close this time. Passover blessings also. Blessings of peace and goodwill are always needed, and I think especially now. Sad to hear about the death of Pope Francis, an amazing person who worked for peace in the world. On a lighter note, we had a lovely example of democracy in action this week. There's a North Orthodox girls' school near Victoria Park, and they sent a delegation of three representatives to the mayor's house to knock on the door and lobby for something that they wanted in the neighborhood. So apparently, the girls liked to go to Victoria Park, kind of near the hill where the trees are, and study. High school kids that like to study, that's up my line. And they said it would be just so much easier if we had picnic tables to put our work on. So having been in municipal government for a while, I know that nothing comes free, and that picnic tables, probably for a municipality, not for just a backyard, are pricier than you would expect into thousands. And so I'm thinking about the budget, and I don't want to promise them anything that I can't deliver, so I said, I will certainly look into it for you, and if we can put it in the budget, we, we will, you know, put that on our dream list. So they left, and I called Dave DeCoster, and I said, is there any hope at all that we could get picnic tables for these high school girls to study on? And he says, as a matter of fact, the Oakland County is going to redo the park, Shepherd Park, and they're going to move the kitchen from one side to the other side of the shelter. And so in the meantime, we're storing a bunch of picnic tables that are just sitting here. And darned if he didn't hop out in his truck and deliver those picnic tables to the hill for the girls. Democracy in action. Excellent. Good work, Dave DeCoster. Mayor Protem Shaun Whitehead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to remind everybody that World Dance Day is February, April twenty-seventh, this, this Sunday, from four to six P.M. in the community center, so hope to have everyone there. It's a great, great event that I've been a part of for the past couple of years, so hope to see everyone this Sunday at four P.M. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Solomon Radner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know Shaun's not going to do a plug for his own event, but it's really all of our event. The Juneteenth event is coming up, and we can certainly use more sponsorships. I know that my team at my law firm always liked to sponsor. We always do sponsor. We're going to sponsor this year again. Anybody else who would like to contribute to this amazing event, reach out to Shaun. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Julie Edgar?
Thank you, everybody, for coming and for your input. We like to, we like the, the eyes on the city, so thank you. And to reiterate what Councilwoman Whitehead said, we do have World Dance Day, which is a wonderful event, four to six on Sunday at the community center. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. And our newest councilmember, Stephanie Crawford?
And tonight, while we were celebrating the retirement and the service of one of our officers, I wanted to give a shout-out a couple of weeks ago. I hope I say his name right. Steve Abanowski? Abanas? Arvanowski? Yeah, I got locked out of my car, and he was, got me in so quick, and I, and he was just so pleasant, and I told him, I'm just going to thank you and embarrass you at our next city council meeting. And I hope I don't have everyone calling when they get locked out of their cars now. I'm so sorry, but it was appreciated, and I just wanted to tell him thank you.
They are there for us.
They are.
Cheerfully and bravely, and we appreciate them.
Yes, and it was so appreciated, so thanks again, and good job, you guys. You do a great job.
Thank you. There being no further business, to come before this council, this meeting is adjourned.